Hello everyone, welcome to Wealth Pals recorded session. This particular recorded session is for you guys who might not want to attend the live sessions on the Christmas Eve. And you don't mind to watch recording. But I'll urge you to watch the full recording because this is the special session that I have. Together with us today. Just a quick update, so for the past few weeks, we will have been going in and out.
Yeah.
Not just Taiwan, Singapore, but also Malaysia.
Thailand as well.
Thailand, oh, yeah, so yeah.
To, to, yeah, attend some activities. We've just done an event in Taiwan. And a very good one, so it's called Wealth Restart Program, it's a three day program. Together with another thirty plus entrepreneurs in Thailand of Taiwan. We stayed together and used the three days to simulate the life from twenty all the way to seventy.
Oh, twenty to seventy years old.
Because I found that there, there are a lot of methods or tools in the market or in all the books that everyone can find. But if you don't have like real feeling about it, then it's hard for people to take actions or to use the tools. So I think it's a very good program for people like, people on the street or people even myself to kick up right away. Because you've experienced something further that you cannot imagine by yourself.
Okay, yeah, so while you are speaking just now, I, I felt like there's an arrow towards me. Because I'm one of the people who sometimes get too much procrastination in life, like waiting something. But I don't know what I'm waiting for, but it's like always waiting for something to happen to do something next.
Your, and your goal are still the same like you, you did five years ago.
Okay, yeah, so one of the goal, for example, one of the goal is to get the bike license. So I registered for a bike license beginning of the year, uh, two, 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 four. But right now is two, oh, two, four December, there's close to like ten lessons that I need to attend. I only get to attend to the second lesson. But yeah, so there's some procrastination happening in a way, but of course there's some changes in life. I should not give that as a excuse, but yeah, that's one of the goals that I didn't achieve.
You told me you wanna lose weight like four years old, but now it's like.
But on that. But on that point, I did lose weight, just that I gained back in some way, yeah. And then for the last two months, I, I, I gained back some of the weights because some life changes lah. There's a new life coming to life lah, and then I need to kill him like the midnight, I cannot deny that. There's also reason why I have Will here to really set up this perfect opportunity to reload things that in my life. So that I can achieve some of the goals that I've set in the beginning of the year.
Yeah.
Yeah, so this is a session that I set up for myself, actually it's not for you guys, it's actually for myself. I just use you guys as an excuse for you to set this session for me to get consultation session free. Okay, yeah, so this is my privilege that you guys, if you like that, you watch to the end, then you see how to arrange some of the sessions or programs that we, we can think of later on. So just now, Will mentioned about the, the three day program, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so Jaxion also went there, yeah, so Jaxion say hi.
Hello.
So Jaxion went Taiwan and then participate in the program and then he went through it, but later he will share his part of Ba Ting lah. So you ask him whether he do anything after the program, but definitely I didn't went there since July. There's some reform in our team, there's, there's some changes in our wealth path as well. So for those who have been following our wealth path and then continuing giving us encouragement, thanks to you guys for, for supporting us. And for us to supporting you back, that's why I have these sessions together with you. And to go through this very, very powerful book.
Yeah.
Yeah, a bit of context lah, so this, all of these things like what Will have said, it can be found online anywhere, any places. Just that colliding into a system, a process to help us to achieve some of the things that we like to achieve in life lah. And when I look at this, at first, I felt a bit guilty.
For why?
It's, it's all the while since the day I know Will, he had been mentioning all these things all the while. But for the longest time, I didn't do anything about it. So this time round, I'll take this opportunity for this one hour to get this thing done.
We'll see.
Okay, but before these sessions, I've done some homework lah, so yeah. It may not be a complete homework, but in real words, do something and then we do it better along the way. Alright, and in this process itself, actually I, I find a lot of challenge lah, where, when I work this process that you have created. And then there's a lot of questions that come in your mind and then maybe you can help me clear a bit of my doubt lah, okay? If I read a real book, so one of the things that you mentioned, you have to find your own why, find things that you will be MPS lah, which is meaningful. Preferred passions and which is your strength.
Yep.
So that's why this is the, the thing whereby if you guys are lost in life, I think this is a great exercise really to find what I'm passionate about. So one of the things that I'm passionate about is really help people who are not clear in terms of their financials or even in terms of their investment. To find their clear target, clear goal in building their portfolio. So since July, you have seen me like ushering a lot of way, right? So if you have missed out, watch the December third session, that's where I did a review for the six month. And I find a lot of passions or when they are people getting benefit from it.
Yeah.
And then I, I find that's my strength in a way that I studied in finance for the longest time and I do a lot like, I, I take CFA lah, one of the things that, yeah, Will make fun of me. Take CFA, but yeah, but a lot of things that didn't get done. But for these particular sessions, when I look back, there's this one thing that struck to me a lot, which is the dream vault. Commonly we call it dream list lah, so when we talk about dream list, Jaxion, what do you, what come to your mind when you talk about dream list?
Anything in your bucket list?
Ah, yeah, yeah, bucket list, like skydiving lah, uh, bungee jumping lah.
All the things that you want, want to do, even do.
Yeah, so, yeah, so a lot of things like, a lot of enjoyment, I want to enjoy something in life. But yeah, when I go through this dream vault, what I find is the more I write.
Yeah.
Actually, not so much about traveling. So just to share, if you look at my list, very superficial, if you like that, we are, we are all normal, if we are very purposeful, then you are good because you are on track. So I thought of if like travel to New Zealand, Hungary, Taiwan for short stay, all these things.
Okay.
And then the more I write, I find there's some things in life that I like to have, maybe like I would have a farm, a garden of my own. I, I like to work on something like CEO or management interview, which is the things that I have been talking for the longest time. I think it's more than ten years, like, but I still on the way. And next is I like to do something like seventy-five KG, yeah, fifteen percent body fat percentage, yeah, this is the, this is the target, right? I don't know, maybe five, six years ago ah, or even longer than that. And yeah, full marathon.
I've been here, here this for a long time.
Yeah. And then other than that is like more to career wise lah, so I like to build a community, I like to have maybe some active income that break hundred thousand. And then I like to have passive income a hundred thousand. And then, then come to the stage whereby I like to have, to build a community.
Yeah.
So one of the communities that targets that I like to have is one thousand active community member. And this community member will, will go through like my financial pla, my finance planning or even investment planning. And then, yeah, and then I also add my family in, my kids, and then a lot of different content creations. While I'm building this dream vault, I find I, I keep on writing, there's a lot of things that I want, when should I stop?
Okay, so let's put it in a, let's, let's take it in a higher view for this. The process we're going through right now is to start from divergence to convergence. Which is actually like for the dream vault or whatever you call it, right, the bucket list or like the dream garage, the kind of things. Essentially to write down what you really love to do or the things that like your emotion trigger you to do. Or we all grow up in certain culture or environment and the environment, there are like credentialism. They're like consumerism.
Consumerism, um.
Yeah, like all that, so that build up our belief system. So the vision will guide us to all the like superficial stuff that you just mentioned. The process of this dream vault is to figure out like what's short term and what's long term, what, what can sustain and bring you like joy for a long time. So for example, if you want, you, you say you wanna go to New Zealand, then what I would do is that, okay, if I am now in New Zealand, what's next? You find everything you've written down, you don't have to own that or experience that, you wanna have the kind of status where you owned it or when you experienced it. So it's not the car, the house, the condo or the trip, the travel of world you want. It's the status emotion that when you've been through all these state, which means all the things you've written down is actually quite short term. It's called a 边际效益, 边境.
Wow, what does it mean?
Okay, it's if you're hungry and now you wanna have a, I, I love noodles.
Okay.
So I wanna have a bowl of noodles, alright? So if I'm hungry and the first bowl of noodles are bad, oh my god, this can bring me hundred percent satisfaction, but what's next one? The second bowl, would it be the same hundred percent?
No, it's like I'm already full.
Yeah, what about the tenth?
No, it's like I, I get boring, I get, yeah.
Yeah, so like everyone would say, okay, I wanna travel, uh, travel around the world, uh, New Zealand and Hungary, all that. But you think of it, if you like go there one after another, like all the way and then you buy a house and then you buy a car, luxury car. You buy like a merz, a roast rice and like all, all that, what will you feel? It won't be like the feeling that you expected or even when you were there. So the process that we write or down is a, is, is, is to figure out what's in there, what's the real feeling or like status or like emotion you wanna be through after all that. So finally you will find what can make you feel like longer or sustain joy would be those you're solving the real problems. Or you're creating values, like we said, you, you build a community. So you find, okay, this is something that you can do all the way, even you retire. Like Warren Buffett, he, he jumped to the office every day or all the way to till he died. So this is something we're searching for and once you can find things like this, it doesn't matter whether you have a big house or a big car like all that. You might be probably have all the money you need to, to buy that, but you've already got the happiness even when you have all that. Been to New Zealand and all that. So this is a process from I call divergence to convergence. So we have to find out like what's the convergence that we're looking for, like everyone's different. So for you, it's building up a community and helping people to do like financial uh, planning, be successful in their finance. And for some other people, they wanna like cook the, the best food in the world. For some others, they, they, they wanna uh, do painting, arts, the kind of things, so everyone's different. So all this is, is just to help us figure out what's really the thing that can bring us sustainable joy.
I think you have highlighted a very strong pointer right here. Commonly when I think about dream list or bucket list, wah, I need to do all these things, I need to go surfing, I dig, I need to go maybe bungee jumping, dig.
And that's all like affected by the consumerism. Yeah, it's all like emotional only.
Yeah, it's all like what, what we watch on Instagram, TikTok.
It's like the noodle, it's, then you're done, you feel empty. Yeah.
That, that, what you say, the plateauing feeling of whatever, even if you have more of the noodles, you have more of the money, you have more of the everything. Actually, the happiness doesn't follow, it's just, okay, this is another bowl of noodle, or I have too much bowl of noodles. When I think back the list, the first few list, like then traveling, like what you say, go to New Zealand, what does it mean? What going to Hungary, what does it mean, you are there, you buy something or whatever. And when I think about it, it's like more of, um, I'm there spending time with my family or my loved ones and enjoy the time being together. Rather than when I're together, but uh, we are just playing on our phone and stuff like that. Yeah, so it's like the being in the moment, sharing the special experience is the one that I'm looking for.
Yeah, and you, you find that interesting for all the people that I've coached, I found that no matter they, at the very beginning. We all thought that we, it takes a lot of money to reach all that. But when you uh, dig deeper, like what you say, even I go to New Zealand, I just wanna be with my family. So if you like tear it down, you will find out like seventy percent of all those you can achieve right now without that much money. Which means everyone's thinking that if I get those money, I can do all the things and I can be happy, but it's like a detour. Actually, you can be happy right now, at least seventy, eighty percent happy right now, you don't need that much money. For example, I used to watch TV with my son, but we don't watch the like cartoon because I don't like all the cartoons. We watch what, we watch like National Geography with like very big screen. So it's like four K and it's New Zealand, like the mountains, it's like we are already there. So my son drink his milk, I drink my wine, bro.
We are there already.
We're there, because we're taking the helicopter and we go all, go through all this then with the air cans, oh, it's cold right here. So it doesn't, you, you don't have to spend so much money, but you're having the kind of enjoyment already. So it's, we don't take detour, if you write it down, especially for people have a like悲观主义.
pessimism lah, yeah.
pessimism, I go, I, I don't have anything, I'm so short of that. At that moment, you'll find that, yeah, you cannot have everything, but on the other side, it's impossible that you don't have anything.
Okay.
What you are short of is definitely more than what you have, but what you have is definitely enough for you to create what you, what you want.
Wow, I, I, wow, this is a very, very powerful reframing, it's impossible to have a lot of thing or even everything. But it's impossible for you to own nothing. Wow, okay, yeah. And actually, at that point, which is the, the second things that we'll be doing, which is when you talk about pessimism, but before we go there, just wrap up on, on this dream list itself. In terms of writing, the things that we like to achieve in a sense that to sustain a short term joy, but in your words, it's more of searching things that sustain our joy. Yeah, the things that truly meaningful and help you to have sustainable joy in a sense. When you talk about pessimism, which is the, the next pointer that you have right here, which is the limiting belief box, because actually, this is the page whereby I can write a lot. Yeah, I'm a born pessimism, I don't know, there's people say people are born optimism, there's people are born pessimism. But for me, I, I definitely more of a pessimism guy lah, actually I got a lot, and some of that I wrote until fifteen, maybe I just share, I write until fifteen. I don't feel like writing anymore, it's, oh, that's, I, yeah, just to show why, I, I write, I, actually I write this pretty fast, it's like within a, 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 short than one minute lah, I can just write, write a lot. There's a lot of things like I can't do sales lah, I'm not good enough lah. Wah, there's a lot, so much that I feel bad about myself. But what you say just now is it's impossible to have everything, but it's also impossible to have nothing. When I go through this, actually, I didn't go to the class, I don't know what's the purpose of writing all this down and then I feel really bad writing this down.
It's very critical to find out your belief system, especially for those who's limit yourself of achieving something. The belief, the limiting belief is actually one of all the beliefs that you have. And all the belief uh, is there for you to actually protect yourself. So you, you don't have to use so much brain bandwidth to deal with certain things. For example, we, uh, in China, we say, 一朝被蛇咬，十年怕草绳. So once you see a snake, you got beaten by a snake, in the following ten years, every time you see something like snake.
Yeah.
Your, your brain will like have a certain reaction and get you to feel like run or fight reaction. So this is a belief system. So once your parents or, or your teacher, your environment tells you, like investing dangerous, like people like us cannot just be rich. Only smart people can be rich. All those are like beliefs that we have, that we possess this. So the limiting belief is that what are the beliefs that actually live in in us? For example, and, and how to recognize it, it's, it's easy, like anything can make you feel guilty. Are all the negative feelings, guilty, angry, or disappointed, or anxious, or feel lost, like all that. So i- if you wanna find out all the emotions, you can just Google, there, there, there's a graph by David Hawkins.
Okay.
So it's all the energy level below two hundred. So anything can bring you the kind of emotions or like energy level, there must be some belief system. Alright, so belief system is powerful because we are not aware of that and it's actually, it creates our own worlds. So there's an effect called Big Million Effects. What you believe will direct to what you see in the world. So there are like four hundred billions bits of information that our eye can perceive at the same time. But our brain can only like handling two hundred bytes at a time. So there's a filtering uh, process between what we receive or what's read out there, between what we really see in our brain. Right, you'll find out, if, if you wanna buy a car, they say Tesla Model Three, then at that period of time, you'll find, okay, you will see the car that very.
I keep looking at.
Yeah, the brain, what can it is called RIS, it's like a natural filtering system. You, you're conscious or you're unconscious will direct your brain to notice what, what you should be, be pay attention to. Okay, so once you have a, a limit beliefs, right? If you live unconsciously, then your brain is designed for survive, not designed for making you happy.
Okay.
Okay, so it's survive, survival is always more important than happiness in your brain.
Okay, so shall I cue my brain?
So, so you have to direct your brain to certain things. Because there, there's nothing can make you like lose your life in nowadays societies, right? If you have dreams, then your brain will like naturally direct or pay attention to those things that might get you in danger. And which are limiting beliefs. The Pig Melion Effect is for, that once, once you, if you have a certain belief system, then what in the world? This is future and next you'll find all the evidence that fits your belief system. So if investing is dangerous, then you will always find all the dangerous investing stuffs or like stories, or like people getting corrupt or like all it, right, stories. So this is your proof.
Yeah.
And then you will take certain actions to support because you wanna protect yourself, right? In your investing, you might be like really, they say,保守, alright?
Yeah, conservative.
Yeah, the kind of things, alright? So the result will become like you don't have any performance in your investment. And then it will support your belief system that investing is nothing, like it's nothing to do with it. And if I, I do something else, it might be like, so it's, once the Pig Melion uh, effect is formed according to your belief system, it becomes your life story.
So it's like a vicious cycle, keep going, circle and circle, going deeper down, yeah. And I think one of the things you, you say like, uh, you'll find things that support your belief system.
Yeah.
It's the confirmation bias that a lot of time, I, I myself also fall into.
Okay.
It's like, oh shit, whenever I buy, the stock pressure go down one, yeah, couple of hours, like every time, but actually is it every time, not necessary, yeah.
But those times that goes now will occupy, occupy your mind. Yeah, people can only get things that they think they are worthy of. Alright, so this is what they think they're worthy of. So if you wanna change your life story, you start from your future. You don't start from I need to get small money, I need to get a degree, I need to learn more skills, it's not like that. You have to change your belief system first. So that's why I ask everyone to write down their limiting beliefs, because this is number one. Alright, so when you write it down, you start to dig further, whether it's making sense or not. You can easily find evidence that proves the belief system is wrong and you'll start from there to doubt it. Because it's like deep in your mind unconsciously, you have to start to challenge it and the process will be feeling bad. Because it's like, there's conflicts in your mind.
Yeah.
So this, this is why you feel like feel bad when you're writing it down, right, and you need to challenge it. It's like telling you like all you have believed is wrong, like all your life might be a mistake, but it's not like that, it's just you're taking progress. You wanna break that, that Pickel Manon events, right, you wanna write a new life story. Yeah, so this is why it's important.
Yeah, so wow, right now it's like really, this is consultation for myself. So let, let's look at some of the examples that I have right here so that we, we can really tackle the limiting belief. All the things really confirm, confirmation bias is the things that I, I fall into. So for, the, the first one that I write right here is like I can't do sales.
Oh.
This is the very first one that I have and then like you say, I, I find all the evidence that shows that I can't do sales. So for example, I did some previous speaking and then no one signed up.
Yeah.
I did go for like B two B discussions and then there's no deal done.
Yeah.
I go for getting like new clients, but new clients didn't got on board. So it's over the years, every time I face a failure and I'll just say, oh, this is, I can't do sales.
Yeah.
So how should I address this?
Yeah, so for this kind of situation is the, the first step is to like you think it to extreme. So that's why the first step is so important, then we find out things we, we really love to do. For you is to build a community, so let's think about it, for building up a community, like sales skill is important. If it's not important, just dump it, right? I, I don't mind with this, I don't mind this uh, limiting beliefs. But if this is something that can help me to reach my vision, then I have to uh, deal with it. So to deal with it, how to do that, um, you find those uh, evidence that's opposite to what you believe right now. For example, people like you will be bad in sales, right? Introvert people cannot do sales, this is one belief system, right? But you can find like hell out of uh, good examples, all the introvert people, they can do sales, alright? So number two is that, okay, so if I continue to believe this, then what will happen after thirty years? Like you may not reach your goals, right? What can I do or what my, my role model would do? So find a role model that might support you to jump out of a belief system. Alright, so these are the first three steps, three steps we will do. And then we start to tear, tear it down to all small steps that you can take actions. Alright, so for example, you wanna do sales and uh, you think like introvert people like myself cannot do sales. So number one, I find, is there any introvert people that can do sales? So you make a list, like I'm also a introvert people. Jaxion is introvert, alright?
Yeah, Jaxion is introvert.
Social extrovert. Like so, so, right?
Yeah.
Extrovert can do sales, Jaxion is a bad example. Just kidding, but now you know, it doesn't make any sense. So there, there are people who are good at sales, there are people who's not good at sales. So um, introvert is, is introvert, it's not the key factor, alright? And let's think out some others, why don't you think you're good at sales?
Okay, but maybe on this point, why I think I'm not good at sales is because I don't think I'm successful enough to convince people to buy my stuff.
Great, so that, that's another thing, so you think that, so the limiting beliefs right here is that I think I have to be successful to convince people to buy my stuffs, okay? Then, okay, so Amazon or Bill Gates or Mark Zuckerberg, so when I do their first sale, are they successful for now? They start with a like very poor, yeah, Amazon, you see the banner, it's a four A four paper or sticker and then Amazon dot com, it starts like that, all the way to Tina. So it's that all the like big, all the successful people, they start from your status right now. This is good example, so think about it and then to see, okay, then what makes a, what makes them successful? Okay, what did they do when they are not successful? So you may find out some factors that, that may destroy your own limiting beliefs. And that's the key, you start to jump out of the effects, yeah. So there are steps right there, which is answer the questions and write down, yeah.
Yeah, wow, so yeah, I have another deeper level of having breaking up from my limiting system lah. Yeah, actually this, I can't do sales the longest time, the things that I face and then, yeah, so you have things to.
I just wanted to like clarify, so for, after you write down the limiting beliefs, the, the next few steps is then to ask yourself whether, and go, go back to your dream vault. Ask yourself, does this limiting belief affects my dream, uh, is it important in my dream?
Yeah.
And then if it does, then you have to go and deal with it, if it doesn't helps or it doesn't affect my dream, then you can just ignore it for now.
Yeah, so it's, it's usually not we decided, we would decide like whether it can affect my dream or not. Because most of it would affect our dreams or our visions, it's just, is it bad enough? So it's a, it's, it's more about uh, setting priorities instead of like I dumb like everything, yeah. Because you have no idea whether it would affect me in the future or not. So write it down first, but I can put it away for now, I deal with something like for you, sales skill, perhaps it's the most important right now. Then I put it as a, as a top priority right now.
Uh, so it's more like to prioritize, then after you prioritize ready, then you find evidence to counter that system.
Yeah.
Which is also to find a role models and then find ways to justify that this limiting belief is nonsense.
Yeah, and actually you found there's a compound effect along the way. Once you break that I'm not, I'm bad at sales, then next time you wanna break another belief system, it, it could be like faster, easier and less uncomfortable. Yeah.
Okay, yeah, so there's a lot more in this process, yeah, so bear with me because I'll get to at one point, one of the things that I like to focus a lot of. But there's this few page that I, I skip very fast. So for example, build new belief, positive self talk, life vision.
Yeah.
So these are the things that I just skip, I think it's also inborn on my belief system in the sense that. I don't know what is the new belief that I need to deal with, but I know that I, a lot of things that I need to get off. So these are the things that I haven't put in place, so what I'll thought on this.
Okay, actually, these are those, we cannot just re. Okay, actually, these are those, we cannot just remove one limiting belief easily, alright? So it's okay, if a guy just lost his girlfriend, what's the quickest way to jump out of a set zone?
Get a new girlfriend.
That's it.
Yeah.
The quickest, the fastest and best way to dump your old limiting belief is to replace it with a new one.
Okay, so this is the relationship advice.
Yeah.
Just get a new girlfriend.
But too old for you, bro. Oh, too late for you, bro, too late, too late, yeah.
So instead of dealing with the limiting belief, it might be faster to build a new belief. Because in, in my, in my, in my mind, it's like, actually, my limiting belief, I can't do sales. The new belief I would have is that I can do sales.
Well, it's, okay, so we just carry it down, right? For, for example, so the limiting belief would be people are not successful enough can do sales. This is your limiting belief. So now you'll find, okay, the new belief is that, oh, even Jeff Bezos start from nothing. Right? So people with nothing can do sales. Or like people have nothing must do sales. This new belief. And I think the most powerful belief that I built to myself is that I used to feel like conflicts when I try to make more money. Because money is like in my environment, money, making more money might make me feel a bit guilty. Because like all the riches seems to be bad guys. I don't wanna be bad guys, but I wanna be rich. So it, it becomes a conflict. So it's, every time I wanna talk to my boss, I want more money, when I was, when, when, when her job, I feel guilty. I'm ashamed of by asking for more money. And when I'm doing my own business, I feel sorry when I wanna raise price in the very beginning. So it's, I, I found it, it happens to everyone. So I replace a new belief system to myself is that we, first of all, I found that it's not all the rich people are bad guy. And I found that if you're rich, then, and you're a good guy, then you can do more good things. So from there, I know I'm, myself is a good guy. So from there on, from, from then on, I start to feel, okay, earn more money, get rich, is my responsibility. Because I have to be, uh, more powerful and more influential, I have to do more good things. But if I don't have money, I might not be able to do that much, that many good things. So being rich is my responsibility. It's not something I want, it's my responsibility because I wanna do more good things. So that's my new, uh, belief. And start from there, I, I start feeling guilty, getting more money, raise price. Because just all the money I get is because I create like same level of value. And if I create that value, then I am obligated, obligated to get that much money. Okay, yeah, so then I can do more things or I create more values. This is one thing, a good example for myself.
Wow, thanks for sharing that because look at my sheet, it's totally empty. I'll spend some time, more time here. And, yeah, so I think role model, just now you have mentioned a bit about it, which is finding a role model that can break the limiting belief. Other than that, is there anything when you talk about role, role model?
Yeah, because having a role model can, I think it's a psychology thing, like, um. There must be some moments that you feel down, or like you feel it's, it's impossible, or like you feel like it's all bullshit. At that moment, it's, if you just see all the jitang, like chicken soup, it doesn't help. But at that moment, if there's a role model, like living that way, then you know, it just give you more power. For myself, Kobe Bryant, right? If I feel down, I feel like everything's meaningless, then I watch the, his interview and I, I read his book. Things, okay, I, I can, at least I can calm myself down. It's powerful to have a role model.
Then who can be look for as a role model and also how to be buying role models? In this one, it helped me and also other people.
When you're looking for like the opposite of your limiting beliefs, it's definitely some people doing the same thing. So you find people who's on the opposite of your living belief, then that would be the role model. Yeah, there'll be like tons of role model, just pick one of those, yeah.
Yeah, so actually, like Will, Kobe Bryant is not so much my role model in the sense that. Maybe I, I just share a bit like the changes of my belief, or even in like playing a basketball. So I always thought like underdog can fight their own way. So actually, my first role model would be Allen Iverson.
Okay.
Yeah, so he played a game differently, he just don't conform, uh, and nobody would believe he can play with his size.
Yeah.
Yeah, but the way of he playing is I just get the ball, I just get the ball in. Team might not be the highest priority. And then there's a lot of fight and hatred kind of thing. Until the new role model that I have right now is Stephen Curry, it's like very more inclusive, more team player, like team before himself. Yeah, so this, so what do you thought like a changing role model in that sense? Uh, this is a new fancy guy, then I follow the new role model.
So role model is, you, you don't have to love everything the role model does. It's more about the certain beliefs that he has and that he has done. Can help you to defeat your old limiting beliefs. So that's the key. So for Kobe, actually, if you see Kobe, his hand is not big enough, his height is not tall enough, his jump is not high enough. So what he can do is he just have a long term plan and he like train four times a day. So like when, for no, normal people, they train two times a day. So he trains like four times a day. So it's like day after day, years after years, when you find out, oh my god, Kobe's like so much ahead than I'm right now. You wanna catch up, it's impossible already. So this is something for people like, like myself, right? I, I, I don't have like good background, right? I'm not like talented, smart enough, I can relate to what Kobe does. Because people like us will be like, zemi yidian.
Yeah.
Right, anten soji.
Yeah.
Bao xiang tai dou.
It's like I born in this status, I was just keep whatever I have.
Yeah, yeah, but it's a good example for myself that even a normal, like average, not normal, like average talent in NBA, right? Is tough of, so in the whole of pain. So people like him can do that, then I have the reason to believe myself, right? I, I don't have all the like necessary talents, right? If I, I continue to work on things that I think, I think it's right, then someday I might be there, yeah.
Alright, yeah, so there's a lot of role models we can look up for. Just now, there's a good question like, who should we look for? Yeah, maybe that's the things that, there are some things that you like to achieve, that person achieved before then, that might be a good role model.
It doesn't have to be everything, it's just certain things that he's done, right? And, and pitch your new belief system.
And then next, which is the life vision.
Okay.
This is the thing where I, sometimes in, like, I just thought, how far ahead you should think about in life? I like, so, sometimes I went thinking, is this really things that I need to do to live a life? And then what is life visions that, is this have to be very, what is it called, wei da? Very big, very noble. I like change the world, I like to be the person who cure anything. There's a big problem, I want to solve that big problem, but.
Okay, yeah, I, I think to understand life vision, the most common mistake that people will make is that. Life vision is something I wanna do in the future. For me, life vision is to, the meaning of life vision is to determine what you should have your day today. What you should do today. So for me, like life purpose, life vision, goals, it's not important that I reach it or not. They're just there to make my today better, happier, meaningful, alright?
Yeah, what does it mean?
Okay, okay, that, that, that means, life vision, most people starts from, I wanna change the world or that. My version of vision, if you take a photo look at that, is like, what's your ideal day be? Because even you save the world, I believe you still need to go to bed in the night, right? Brush your teeth in the morning.
Yeah.
And then say morning to your wife if you are still there, and, and like say how to hug your kids. It doesn't, it's not a point, right? Life vision is not a point, it's again, sustainable life status, right? And it could be in the future, but when you understand enough. You then know that seventy percent of your life vision, you can achieve right now, right? Brush your teeth nicely.
Okay.
Right? Have a good relationship with your kids, your parents and your wife. And when you get rich, when you save the world, you still wanna be healthy. So don't stay in the living room and watching Netflix, go to the gym, eat healthy and hang out with your good friends. Yeah, don't just go like, like pops all the time, the kind of things. So that's so-called ideal life, that's called the life vision. Yeah, so, once you figure out what really the ideal life is. Then you'll figure out most of the ideal life components can be done right now, today. But if people don't have a ideal life vision, they don't have the, the idea of what, what's the ideal life for myself. Then people would simply go with things that's less obstacles. Like they would go with the things that's easier, because it's how our brains design. And what's easier for us? Scroll your phone, like TikTok, shorts, reels, right? And going home, just lie down on your couch, alright?
I do it every day.
Or you go to the office and just be a, be a zombie, right? Whatever you say, then I do. And I take salary and I day after day, copy and paste. So people die at twenty, just bury it at eighty. It's like that. Okay, so if you, if we don't have a life vision, then we have no, no direction or no ways of improving our life quality from today. So for me, it's, it's not about whether I achieve the goal or not. It's about, I know that where I wanna go, I know what's the ideal life is. Then I can start to overcome all the little uncomfortable things in my life. To make myself feel good, feel better and less superficial.
So maybe on, on that point, right?
Yeah.
So maybe my ideal life is simple, I just like to maybe every morning have a good breakfast with my, my family and I have a good. So called conversation, quality time.
Yeah.
Yeah, but what does it mean by having that as a ideal life then? So I'm doing it every day. So then what's the purpose of having this vision in the first place? I'm doing it really, so it's, huh? Does it mean, if this is really the vision, I just live this day by day, that's it?
Then how do you feel right now? Is there like something else you wanna do?
Other than having breakfast every day?
Yeah, having good relationship. Like for you, you wanna build a good community.
Yeah.
So that determines like all the time excluding what you have done already, like all the other time that you wanna do. So you won't just go into the office and then kill all your time by doing nothing, or like doing like whatever the, the company wants, it's just what you want.
Okay.
So you start to push yourself towards building a strong community, okay? So this also like you're having a quality time for yourself. Because it's either you work yourself or you work for someone else. And now you work yourself because you have your ideal life. Even you're just a staff, like you're an employee, but because you have your own ideal life, like what I'm doing right now, even it's like for someone else. Even I'm, I'm taking a day job salary, it start to be different because I know what I'm doing this is because I can reach the level of my ideal life. So I'm doing this, alright? It's a conscious choice already. It's not just a driving, driven by the credentialism, right? Like you get a job and you just don't think too much, right? Instead, it, it, it becomes like, I choose to be, I choose this like stable way of living because it means a lot to me. So people with this, they start to be less complaining, right? Less complain. Because I choose this consciously. It's not, ah, so CP either, you know, so I, this is the only thing I can do, right? So just stay up there and I can see all the way through my, my retirement, so boring. No, because you start to have your own choice, alright? So that's the meaning.
Ah, okay, now I guess. So it's maybe having breakfast is just one of the many things that I like to have in the ideal life. So there's a lot of different portions that sum up as the ideal life. So maybe the choice of working for yourself or working for others is also part of the ideal life.
Yeah, the example that I say like having your preference is, is that there are so many people, they're thinking about like their ideal life. They're thinking about things they don't have. And like being like anxious or like being painful about it. And they start to lose things they have right now. So this is what I wanna avoid. For example, people chase after money, so I, and I know where they lose their health. Lose their, their wife, their family. So I don't want that to happen. So this, this is the reason I raised that example.
Okay, I, so for me, I didn't spend time right here. So maybe, Jiajun, you, you did spend a lot of time right here, right? Anything that you, you face or you have questions on?
For me, this part is, I realized maybe it's more awareness that, well, the, the first line I wrote, it's like what kind of life would surface or go up. So it's a reason why I'm.
Yeah.
The first thing I realized I write is for other people, provide love and support to my friends and family. Then after I've written that sentence itself, then it made me think, why is it for other people, what about myself?
Yeah.
And then the second line, I start writing, to be happy with my life, which is most important thing, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I think it's also a realization that I always put myself in for other people.
Yeah.
Then tend to not do things for myself, like. And then, then moving forward, then I think, I think the, a day, how, the perfect day in my life, I think also brought, brought me to different aspects of. What I want to do during that day, which is one, one is like to spend time with family. And also, the real reason why I want to go other countries is to really spend time, not so much on traveling, like I think you mentioned about that.
Just have some quality time, working time away from, from home and.
Yeah, I think the main thing for this exercise that I got is the keywords that I want, which is important for the next segment, right? And also writing down, there's this portion that asks you to write about. If you are leaving your last day, what do you want to be most proud of or is the most valuable? Or, and also what is the thing that you don't want to feel regret about, regretful about? I think that's the one that brought it home because a lot of times I don't do things because I'm scared, there's the belief systems, right? So when I write down the things I regret, then it's, oh, yeah, really, I don't, I, I, I realize that I am not doing things because. Other people say so, or other people's choices, right? And if I really want it, I felt myself, I felt that I'm like always at the backseat, not doing the things.
Yeah.
Uh, that's pushing to convince people, say, hey, I want this thing done my way or is any way we can do, do it such a way that I get what I want, you get what you want, yeah.
Yeah, exactly. I think Jiajun is bringing up a very good perspective, he said. There are many people, they, they have all these practice, but they still doing the same thing every day. And why we say they scared and it's like the, all the memories, the emotion in the past drag them down. If you encounter, encounter this kind of situation, just remind yourself that every second we're between life and death. Every second, like nobody can tell, next second, they might, there, there might be like something happened and I've gone.
Yeah.
So what I wanna do is make sure if that comes tomorrow or next second. I don't, I, I can have a minimum level of regret to this life. And as too, I worry about people might say something, is like before hundred years, nobody knows me. And I believe and I guarantee that after a hundred years, nobody will know you as well. So what the heck, like I, I give up my dream because some others say something, right? So just be aware of this, this is powerful and just keep it in mind.
And I think like this exercise also helped me to think that I, I might need somebody to push me, I haven't.
Yeah, the environment.
You're just being yourself. If I'm doing this myself, I felt that I will go back to square one if I don't have Eric or Will here to push me, say, hey, you said this, but you never. No, no one's holding me accountable, lah.
Yeah.
So I think the, the powerful thing is that you need to find somebody who is accountable for what I just wrote here.
Yeah.
Totally, like community and also accountability.
Yeah.
That's one of the things that I, I like to build up for, like, one of the things when you mentioned that is, ah, accountability, that's why I'm recording this right here. So one year later, when I look back, it's in public, really, it's in your, it's in your eyes, you ask what happened.
We may have to redo all of that.
One year later, eh, you're the seventy five k Jiggle, still the seventy five k Jiggle. Yeah, exactly, yeah, I strongly, I call to your point, which is community and also accountability is the thing to really. Not to say that, I use that as a excuse or whatever, it's just that if within a healthy environment, it can support the things that we have to do, lah. Alright, come to the portion of today, actually, at the first place, I want to put more emphasis on this. But actually, after one hour talk, right, actually, I, I felt that this is the, it's not as important as the, the front part.
Okay, yeah.
But what I want to come here at this point, maybe you, you later share me your thoughts, because, yeah. Why I can have this done much easier?
Yeah.
Because I felt like this is what I want, like I, I want this, I want that, I haven't. Like, I, I want this, I want that, I haven't have a clear mind in that sense, but I want to have this body structure, I want to be a content creator. I want to be a good family, and I want to be, build my network, so these are the things that I want.
Yeah.
Yeah, and one of the things that I didn't write in the middle is, because I also don't know how to stomach all these things.
Yeah, okay.
It's, and I, maybe it's just a context of what this.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
九宫格啦, so,九宫格is the things that I learned from Will and so, but Will also shared, this is from Shohei Ohtani.
Yeah.
Which is the M V P player in the N L B, which is the best Japanese baseball player, should say best right now, yeah.
In the world, in the world.
In the world, yeah, in the world.
Yeah.
Yeah, so he, he can, he can pitch, he can bet, hardly any people can do two at the same time, but he's the.
Get both M V Ps.
Yeah, which is the most home run person in, in, in the league. And he got, just got his championship again.
Yeah.
Which is, yeah, so for people like me, when I look at successful guy, right, wow, he's so successful, he must have some things that he has done right, whatever. Or maybe he has the talent, he born with it, but actually at the back, when we dig back, one of the history that he has, that in his high school, he really start doing.
Um.
Planning.
Yeah.
Yeah, maybe in high school, he didn't write be in the major league baseball player as the goal, but back the time, he liked to be the top eight.
Uh, first drop.
First drop kind of thing, it's not the champion yet.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, so it's, yeah, so maybe come to, to this point when I.
Okay.
Doing this exercise, that actually, I have a lot of things that I want to achieve, and I can write the so-called子目标, the, the sec, the second level.
So.
The sub-goal very easily, yeah, okay, I wanna say, I just, I, I just write all over, but actually, the, the core goal, I don't know what is it.
Got it.
Yeah.
Yeah, so actually, thi- this is a tool to like breaking down your uh ideal life. To real actions every day.
Um.
It's a bridge between your vision.
Um.
And your daily life, so that's why it's so important.
Um.
Okay, and to fill it out, first of all, you have to think that. Nobody can simply use one九宫格.
Um.
It's like, people will like have.
Um.
So, the, the number one thing is that you put a small goal in the middle. Alright, so for you, is you're putting like a sort of high level of九宫格.
Um.
It's one there in the top, right?
Um.
So it's all vague and all like very far away. I wanna be, become billionaire, travel around the world, the kind of things, but each of the component, you can build another九宫格 yourself.
Um.
It's like all the way down, so down to what level? Down to project and action item level.
Um.
Okay, so with this, we can start to redesign our own life. Alright, so for example, if you wanna lose weight.
Um.
Alright, and gain like six pack abs, alright, so there's a goal, six pack in the middle.
Um.
So what we do is that we start to study. Around, study everything about this core goal. So there's a diet, there's a training plan, there's a recovery, like and tools, right? And like methods and intermediate state and the kind of things, so like everything you're studying, so there will be a database of this main goal. And you start to categorize all this and become is like a sub category or like a sub areas. So with each area, you will carry down into deeper like actions, like minimum actions.
Um.
So, it's better be, once you see, you know what to do. And this is not again, after you have all the actions, you start to combine it into your current daily life. So, for, for my conclusion is that. Everything you do in your daily life, there will be only three types of actions. Number one is called推进, I don't know, pushion or like progress.
Okay, progress, okay.
Progress, progression, okay, number two is a compound actions, and number three is a反思规划.
Um.
It's like you review and plan.
Um.
Alright, so it's like, at the end of day, if you, your, your days consist with these three types of actions. Then I bet you like grow very fast.
Um.
So what's compound? Is what you just said, brush your teeth.
Um.
Nicely, like having good conversation with the wife and kids.
Um.
And exercise every day, drink water every day, like all the little habits, alright, so you guys in gold and read them habits, right? Yeah, so, this is number one. We, what we're gonna do is that we wanna build as many habits as possible that can help us to reach our goals.
Um.
Alright, we don't just do it randomly, oh, five A M club, it's, you, you get up early, it's good.
Yeah.
If, if it's bad for your dream, then it's not a good habit. So you design your own habit according to what you wanna do.
Um.
Alright, so this is number one, and number two is a progress actions. So for example, for example, back to the example, they were just six apps, right? So finding a coach nearby.
Um.
Right, and I get some trainers, I get some gears, and I find a gym.
Um.
Right, these are all like progressive.
Um.
Right, and after like certain, certain amount of time, you wanna reach a certain level of body fat or that kind of things. Alright, so this is progressive. Even for your, for example, your community.
Um.
So compound is like, I post every day, I create valuable contents every day, this compound. But for pushing is like, I attend this event.
Um.
I wanna find a will to do this podcast, and it's all like progressive actions, okay? And number is a review and planning, so it's every week, or I, I write diaries every day, right? So it, it's like you review what's done, what's done not, because we don't know everything at the very beginning. So it's like by doing certain things, okay, this thing I do, this is not so well, so there's something I can improve. Alright, and planning, so I put this into, I iterate along with.
Um.
Alright, so uh every week, I will have a sort of idea about what I'm not gonna do this week. There are progressive actions, right, compound actions, and force my week. So at the end of day, this is like annual planning, right?
Um.
So my, my life is consistent, my, my year is consistent on four quarters. And actually, for twelve weeks plus one week.
Um, yes, twelve, yeah.
And it's like, each twelve week and one week is a cycle for myself.
Um.
Within these twelve weeks, I will put in some more compound actions. I wanna build certain hobbies.
Um.
Yeah, okay, and also I wanna do some progressive actions to reach certain goals. Alright, and at the last week, the one week, I'll do the review and planning for the next round. So each year, you will have a four, four cycles only.
Um.
Right, but within this four cycle, you start to feel like, at the end of the year, you, you won't be like, wow, another year passed by.
Um.
You wanna see, okay, it's just something's going on, and you build more and more good hobbies, good for your goals. And you taking progress of things you wanna do. Alright, and then you review and plan it on the way, so it's, you, you get to know more things, because every, every time you wanna do a new thing. You go to, you go back to the九宫格.
Um.
You do the study of what you wanna do, and then you start to compare it with your original lifestyle. So it's something about, okay, what should I replace, what should I change, or what should I enhance?
Um.
And what's really important, alright, so in the, in, in, in the past, I don't think like exercise every day is important. But when I found that exercise and, and be healthy or gaining muscle is so critical for so many of my goals. Then I start to put it as like top priority in my life, alright? Otherwise, I wouldn't like, you know, do it like once a, a week, or you know, I'm, I'm exercising and it's good enough, now it's not, it's five times a week. So that's something that I found, so you start to feel like, okay, so this is important, and this is not important, and you start to have your own lifestyle. Right, and other than that, I also found that. Everything one do, because I used to just review what I have done.
Um.
The hit rate of my targets, but I found that if everything we do is to reach. Our ideal life.
Um.
Then we have to pay attention to all the beautiful moments. Alright, starting from this year, I do, other than simply review my hit rate of my target. I also just check all the picture that I took in the past year, and I found like sixteen beautiful moments of my life. And I'll do my best to like copy it, replicate.
Um.
Yeah, replicate it in the next year.
Um.
For example, I found that I love my kids to wait for me in the airport when I fly back to Singapore.
Um.
So I will like mess my these kind of memories with kissing myself in the next year. Alright, so I, I won't fly back on Wednesday, Tuesday, or weekdays, I fly back al- always on the weekends, because my kids can come pick me up. Alright, and I for感恩时间, like every night, we say things that are great at the time.
Um.
I try my best to copy that every day.
Um.
So the, there, I, I define sixty, sixteen uh beautiful moments, alright, or even like just go to New Zealand, this panel, right? So you find it's, it's quite balanced, is like every day, I'm living the best version of my life, alright? There was something short off, but if anything happens next second, I wouldn't be regret.
Um.
Oh, th- that's the important thing.
Um.
Yeah.
Wow, sixteen beautiful moments.
Yeah.
And then replicate it, yeah, so tie it back to the life visions, the daily life, what is the things that I want to have? Then you can just, I can just like keep on doing the, the sixteen things to recreate that.
I'm actually, I wanna have a like, a challenge for everyone, it's called Will Be Good Challenge. So it's like one, one, four, sixteen, so one crazy goal for a year.
Um hum.
One crazy annual goal, it could be like run American, it could be writing a book, it could be like dunk, which I have all done before.
Okay.
Or losing your weight, alright? Okay. It's crazy enough, so one annual goal.
Um.
It, and then for like four seasons, right?
Um.
So there are four quarters.
Um.
So at least you have one project each quarter, right? It could be progressive, it could be simply build some compound hobbies.
Um.
And then sixteen beautiful moments.
Um.
So it's a one, four, sixteen, one, four, one, six, alright, this is, we can do it together.
Um, okay, wow, thank you, actually, I, I, and I want to add it, like with a different action item, but. I think Will's action item i- is even more clearer, because in my previous planning, I thought of maybe we just focus on九宫格. Because it's the most talked about, and then Shohei Ohtani is very in the trend right now, so I thought, ah, you should end there, but actually. That's not the, I didn't think of why is the why behind it, so after these long conversations, after one hour, half hour, oh, one and twelve minutes right here. I think it is a great idea, we, we have this one, four, sixteen, really, no point watching without doing anything. So thanks for watching till at this very end moment, and I really like to raise. All our community to work so this will be good action item for the two O two five. So very simple, one, four, sixteen, so for this two O two five, year of two O two five, let's aim for one crazy goal.
Yeah.
And then have this four quarter.
Four projects.
Four projects.
Yeah.
It can be progressive, it can be individual, but there's four projects that you can choose to. And then with these four projects, the sixteen beautiful moment that you have to capture.
Yeah, it's just clarity around a year.
Yeah, I, I think this is very good, just from my personal experience, actually from, also learned from Will. Previously, I practiced this kind of reality, like creative, always, pull story, pull story, but at some point in time, I just pull creative moment, but it's like just a closure of the day. I, I don't know why I'm doing a, at some point in time, and then I, I started off with another, which is uh三四季画, which is the时间实验时间. Uh, every time I want to keep this, some, some small goal, small goal, I, and I didn't do that, I do one, just one thing at a time. But with this, I think there's a goal that I will achieve, there's a progressive projects that are ongoing, and then also what are the things that I like to capture as a beautiful moment? And also as an creative moment.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I think this is very beautiful, and so in our community, you can share this with us in your WhatsApp, you can share this in our Google community. Yeah, just do in whatever means that works for you, because you also find sometimes, maybe Telegram works for you, maybe. Or maybe you talk Instagram or even Facebook posts works better for you, just do whatever way. But what's help us and, or maybe help yourself, in a sense that what Jashin have mentioned, which is accountability. So if you can get us involved.
Um.
I think the accountability will go up, like hundred, two hundred times, so maybe you can hashtag Will Be Good, you can hashtag Good Will, tag us in any social media, any form that. You, you want to, and then also let us know, don't just tag and not letting us know, let us know that where we should follow you in a sense, lah. And then we'll do our best to follow, and what's more, actually, by the end, right, what we're also to build is also, maybe. You like to have more accountability partners, you like to have a, a more close group to do this together. So for myself, I also like to have people to onboard with me in a community whereby you can do this together, more accountability, more motivation, lah. More motivations to achieve a greater heights in two O two five. So I have two plans, one is like a, a small program, like what you mentioned, have, what Will have done it in Taiwan, which is. Uh, like a life of restart, I, I, by mere translation, maybe we like can do one program. Or maybe you can have a, a coaching program that I, I can personally do it for you guys, so let us know your thought, and then, yep. And then I'll contact with you guys if you have that needs, alright? So that's all for this, the video, and then maybe to wrap it up, maybe one, one phrase or one sentence you'd like to share with your. People in our community, any, one phrase or one words or one sentence.
Just do it.
Nice, Jashin have anything?
Will Be Good.
The, the one that, the one that I, I, I think resonated very well is, I think the one is the one on the limiting belief, so just way to dumb a limiting belief is to build a new belief.
So I think throw away, or over, overlay the bad ones, and then put on new ones over it, okay?
Alright, so for me, very simple, let's have a good two O two five together and see you on Wealth Pulse, everyone, bye bye.
Thank you so much for watching to this video, and I hope that you have enjoyed and learned something from this segment of our weekly Wealth Pulse sharing. We conduct our Wealth Pulse every Tuesdays, eight to nine P M, as we deep dive into the latest and biggest market news and what this means to investors. Do remember to like, subscribe, and also share with more of your friends to support us in making investing easy for everyone to follow. Join us in our community through Wealth Pulse, and I've placed the link in the description box below, I will see you online then, bye bye.